Big trails, long trails they had. All the way upstairs at work at. Next number for Friday nights, Monday morning, they all came.
Uh, same one, same, I got one around.
That's Wilson.
Right, Mary Wallace, Woodup State.
I could have waited on them fishing.
What do you get something?
I don't play.
Turn off on the bypass.
Somehow worked out.
I don't know how far.
She got the man, they said they'd already checked.
Seven ninety, it's the quickest way to go.
That hill was about five minutes, five hundred.
How long here?
There's not, I haven't found one.
We had something in the store.
I really haven't.
Big room on that. Oh, we're crossing.
That's how I go. I go down that way even to go see mom and dad down to Ocean Isle, I'll go that way. Go around and grab, just trying to stay away from.
Rollins at it more. To a place after you. And I mean, boy, she was right, he was hot. Did you like? Boy, he was rank up here.
I don't know why they would not be.
I was the rest of your weekend.
You need microphone.
She's sick.
I've got flu.
Acid or acid, how does that cord is?
Oh, sorry, that's no fun at all. How do you do, man?
It either miss, Art, can you hear me?
Did you have a test?
I don't know.
So you don't really care about my life, it makes you just want my signature. Correct? Okay.
Hawk, can you hear me?
Okay, right here, we're certifying them. Okay. Okay, so I have to check, get it correct?
I'm sorry to hear that.
So doesn't Mike look any different?
Yeah. I, I don't know. Supposed to be very sensitive. I hear that. But I don't think you can hear me speaking. Testing one, two, three.
Has it been turned down?
Testing, testing, one, two, three, three, two, one, test out.
So you can be this, I can't tell the difference to you, I guess.
Good evening and welcome to the agenda meeting for February. No, it's March. Can you hear that, Jackie?
I can, thank you, I love your radio.
The new ones, the new ones where?
Oh, that was the one that I was talking.
That's what it looks like.
How did, how did it pick up?
I got enough cord to pass it on down there.
Behave yourself.
I got my mom in the sauce.
Have you seen that?
Okay, how about you?
The, the pig, the thing. The bar, about six foot long, it's got red lights. I tell you, when she get in that wheelchair, she can go. When she knows where she's at, someday she don't, she don't get that big. There's a circle around that place, I didn't know one around like it, I thought it was breaking.
That would be nice.
She makes that circle.
As long as they get through there. Scenic too.
How you doing, Alan?
I think probably, I seen the pictures.
Uh, eighty, it'd be eighty-nine and two. We don't have meetings, right? I thought with all that stuff in that book, we'd be both, five more thousand. I know it. Port of just more. They meet on, they meet right after us.
Do, sir.
That's why sometimes we run long, it's not after them.
Hey, Kim. How you doing?
Hello, CJ.
Yeah.
How you doing? You sound like you're still nursing the plague. Alright, so be ready to rock and roll.
Well, you say so, bad news and all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order, today is Monday, March fourth, twenty nineteen, it is five thirty P M. And we are assembled here in the Commissioners Boardroom of Oxford City Hall for our agenda meeting. Please turn off or mute any cell phones that you might have at this time. And straightforward agenda tonight, we would, uh, uh, so we'll just move forward to setting the agenda for next week.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add, uh, a new item.
To the agenda for next week?
Yes.
Okay.
To, uh, go into a closed session to discuss me.
Or?
Go into closed session next meeting to discuss me.
So.
And now you want the reason for that?
No, sir. I'll wait like everybody else.
And I'm.
I would like the reason, at some point, you don't have to do it right now, but I would like the reason.
Can you tell us what category of closed session it sits under?
Yes, because every one of you, including the City Manager and half of Oxford, including the Attorney General, received a letter questioning my credibility, questioning and accusing me of unethical conduct. And I know, and some members of this board know, that that's not true, but all members do not know. And I just want to set the record straight.
Who did the letter come from?
I'm sorry?
Who, who did the letter come from?
It come from the, uh, a list, a list of people, uh.
I, I promised you I hadn't gotten a letter.
It come from who?
He said a list of people.
Come from, uh, the, uh, N double A C P.
Was it electronic?
No, it was a written letter to the manager.
A written letter?
Oh, well, well, that's different, you said all of you, I, I have a person who received a letter, okay.
No, it was, uh, the City Manager forwarded a letter to everybody, cause I asked for a copy of it, and he said to be fair, he would send it to everybody. So that's, that's what it's all about.
But I don't think that qualifies as allowable under the criteria for being allowed to go into closed session.
Well, Madam Mayor, am I a public official?
Public officials are actually.
Am I a public officer?
No, a public officer is our City Manager. That, to, to my understanding, elected officials.
Well, that's your interpretation, and I saw, uh, y- y- you know, and if you want to, uh, go into a little contest about this, that's okay, but I can tell you this. We set a precedent when we did it before, and you protested, okay? You brought your attorney with you. But our attorney ruled that it was legal to go into that closed session. So therefore, I'm asking for the same thing, I have a right to clear my name and to get this thing out. And I want to make sure that every board member and the mayor knows exactly what took place. So there's no reason why you would, uh, resist my attempt to do that.
It's not, I have absolutely no objective, uh, objection to your speaking up. That's not the issue, the issue is that under the general statutes, the guidelines for going into closed session are restricted because we do the public's business, that's, so there are clear limitations on what we are allowed to go into closed session.
I have a copy of the general statute, you can interpret it that way if you want to, but I can tell you this, the, uh, City Attorney interpreted in favor of the board the last time we did this, so you, we set a precedent, so therefore, I don't see why. I don't know if you don't want to hear what I got to say? Because, you know, a guy asked me the other day, he said, why do you let, write these letters to the editor, don't you know it hurts Oxford? I said, because they won't let me speak in a board meeting. I can't speak in an open meeting because they, they harass me from the, from the audience. Call me a racist and a liar, and demand that I be removed from office. You know, I didn't give up my rights as a citizen when I became a, a Commissioner. And I, this is just a small request, and I think it's about time that we discussed some things within, uh, within a board. Uh, Commissioner Harris has, has asked for it for numerous occasions, and I have too. So I think this would be an i- ideal situ, uh, ideal time to talk amongst ourselves because I have been accused of things I didn't do, and it was made public. I haven't received any notification from the Attorney General that I'm in, uh, under investigation or not, but I can tell you my reputation has been damaged. It's just like when, uh, a citizen was allowed to come before the board and make accusations against, uh, Commissioner Harris.
Mister Attorney, do you have a comment?
Well, why don't you go ahead and put it on there tentatively, and then let me look into it, cause I, I probably need to get some more information about it.
Okay.
If the board wants to put it on there.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I, I mean, I was a little tardy. So I didn't really hear what the request is, um.
Commissioner Strickland would like to add a closed session to next week's meeting in order to discuss his concerns that he just mentioned.
And I'll make that in a form of a motion.
This question, is this in regards to the letter from Michael Mohammed?
It is. But you're a member of the organization that he put on that letter?
Am I a member?
No, I know you are.
Yeah, I'm a member of the N double A C P.
Okay.
And he copy, he carbon copied, a copy to the N double A C P. The N double A C P is not the sender.
No, but it went out to everybody, including the Attorney General and all.
Quite frankly, Mister Strickland, when I got it, I read it, but I didn't put no meat into it.
Well.
You know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we as, um, we as elected officials of the City of Oxford, we gonna be beaten battered.
We are.
But it's whether or not we conform to it. You know, because only way it can destroy your reputation is you allow it to.
Oh, no, no, I have not seen anybody in that audience speak out against you.
And if they did, I would be glad, cause then I'd say they paying attention to me.
Well, in other words, whatever they say, you would be guilty because they said it, and you're paying attention to the fact that you're guilty, I mean, this is just.
No, no, because somebody says something about you, doesn't mean you're guilty of it.
I know I'm not guilty, but the people out there in the public don't know that.
I'm just curious as to what, what the board is supposed to do with your concern.
Allow me to, uh, go into closed session, express my concerns.
For what purpose?
Well, I'll have to say, I, I read the letter, when I read it, I didn't think there was any substance to it. I didn't think there was a basis for it legally or otherwise, and I dismissed it, I did not even see that it was worthy of responding to. So that was my take on it.
And I'm not heard, I certainly have not, and I have not heard any other member of this board even bring it up. I know I have.
Well, that's all well and good, if you didn't think there was nothing to it, why didn't you give me a call or say to me, Commissioner Strickland, I think that's a bunch of bull, I think you're an honest decent guy. And none of you have done that.
I don't communicate with any community.
I, I'm well aware of that, Commissioner Bridges.
I don't, because you know what, my business is here. And, and, and so I ain't gonna call you and make, and give an opinion about what somebody says about you. I mean, that's between you and them.
That, that's you, but I'm different, everybody on this board is different.
I don't see what purpose it would serve for you to go into closed session and talk to us about it, I don't see what purpose it would serve. And I'm trying to figure out, what are you trying to get?
I'm trying to get my name cleared.
With us?
Yes. Cause I know that I've said things you don't believe and things that you don't know, but let me tell you something, I told you, you either meet and talk about it, or you had read it in the paper, and I'm serious, I don't want to hurt the City of Oxford, but I'm a dead gum if I'm gonna let people just run all over me, I've got my rights, and I, I'm gonna stand up for my rights. And you know that I said that I was gonna do a documentary, and I'm gonna do that documentary. And if it hurts the City of Oxford, it lies on you because I'm not allowed to speak.
You are allowed to speak.
Oh, yes, and I tell you one thing, I can, I'll bet you a hundred dollars to a doughnut, if I said to you, I would like to discuss the Chief of Police in the next minute, this audience would be full, and they would shout at me, and they would interrupt me, now tell me that's not true.
I can't speak to that, what I can say is.
I never, I never saw you do this. You, you did it on me. You know, with your little hammer? We set a precedent when we went into closed session.
That was.
I don't care, we set a precedent, it's just like, let's go back a little bit further.
Do, does misinterpreting the general statutes more than once make it more appropriate that it was done once?
I know that you're all, all for what's right and what's wrong, do you think it's appropriate to over, override a person, a policy, a city policy, po- policy with a resolution? Do you?
I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't think that's accurate, I think that meeting y'all are talking about, we were discussing the City Manager, that's completely different from discussing the board member.
Oh, oh, it was.
City Manager is a public officer.
Well, I, I agree with that, Tom, but.
Well, that's, that's what the purpose of that meeting was for, it wasn't for something besides.
But we were discussing the complaints made against one of our elected officials.
From the City Manager?
Right. Does it matter where, does it matter where it comes from?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Mister Strickland, if we tr- called a meeting because s- somebody said something to us as elected officials that damaged our character or in some way upset us or made us feel that it was a derogatory statement, then we'd be going in closed session every month.
No, we wouldn't.
I would.
Maybe, maybe.
Well, maybe I should too.
But anyway, I made, I made a motion.
We have a motion.
It's, it's up to the board.
What is, do we want to add a closed session to next week's agenda for this purpose? Those in favor rate, oh, yes, sir.
It's a discussion.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it either way, but I think that the attorney said that we need to wait, and he needs to file some more information. He said put it on there tentatively, and then we move forward. That, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I don't have a problem with it, I want you to know that, I, I don't, but I, I think we need, I, I'm not, I don't think we either, but what I'm saying, I, I think we need, that's what he's getting paid for, we need to follow the legal advice of our attorney.
Okay, so everybody agreed that we will put a placeholder and await input from the City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, uh, raise your right hand if you support putting a placeholder for the closed session to discuss Commissioner Strickland.
Following advice from the attorney?
No, the placeholder before getting advice, then the City Attorney will give us advice whether it is appropriate or not. So right now, it is, will we tentatively put it awaiting feedback, correct?
Let me, I don't understand, I'm confused.
Is, is, is it important, Mister Strickland, that you do it at our next regular meeting? Or could the attorney look into it and then we have a vote?
Well, if, if it takes some time, we wouldn't, uh, get the i- issue resolved by the next meeting. And I don't see any reason in putting it off, I mean, it i- it is, it, it is what it is.
Um, you see, you wouldn't get, we wouldn't get it resolved, what's the resolution you're looking for, Mister Strickland, maybe that'll help me?
The resolution?
That, that you're anticipating coming out of the meeting?
I, I want, I, I want to have my say. I haven't been able to have my say because I've been interrupted, I don't know how many times.
Just to this board?
Yeah, yeah, to this board, yes.
You still have an obligation to have your say in public, that it is not, there is not a legal basis.
Believe me, Jackie, you ought to know me well enough to know that I do what I say I'm gonna do, and I will have my say. But I want to avoid that situation. Okay?
Now, I, I'll have to say, if it's uncomfortable for you, that doesn't mean that we need to go into closed session because, cause you said I want to avoid this situation, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, I want to avoid airing dirty laundry in the public, that's exactly what I'm saying.
One more question, Mister Strickland, why do we have to go in closed session, why we can't discuss it now?
He said you want to avoid airing dirty laundry in public.
That's right.
Oh, we on air, oh, okay.
Oh, no, are we on air?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would prefer, I'm just saying, my preference would be the attorney report to us, and then we vote on whether or not we do a closed session with Mister Strickland's concerns.
Well, I think that that was understood when I made the motion to put it on the, on the docket. And if he comes back before the next meeting, before we actually do it, then that would, that would do it.
Motion's already been made, I think.
Yes, okay, so.
Consensus was that it go on and, uh, stay on there unless Tom says it's inappropriate to take it off.
I, I, I want, I want, I, I'm trying to get a, a, a picture of, once we have this meeting, when we come back, where we going and what we doing?
And.
I mean, really, really.
Well, just let the chips fall where they may, whatever happens in that closed session.
Well, I think we also need a category, generally speaking, when you say you go into closed session, you have a reference point. So, we have to prevent the disclosure of privileged information. We have to prevent the premature disclosure of an honorary, honorary award or scholarship. We have to consult with the attorney. We have to discuss matters related.
Just get down to the box, the one at the bottom there where it talks about, uh, in other words, let's, let's look at, uh, A one, A sixty-one. To consider qualifications, competence, performance, condition of appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear, investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by a, against a public officer or employee, it's just that simple, I don't need you to read all that other stuff, you've already done that. And I don't want to be ugly, but, it's the one right here. But sometimes you got to be ugly to get your point across.
A public officer?
A public officer is essentially Alan, correct?
That's your interpretation?
Mister.
He, he's appointed, but he's also a city employee, is he not? So is a clerk.
That would be the only possible one that could apply, so just put that on there, and then I'll let y'all know as soon as I can get, get it done.
Okay, so, we've had the discussion, Commissioner Woodliffe, Commissioner Bullock, I believe you raised your hands, who else is in the affirmative? To add this.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what we're voting on.
We, the, the voting was, um, the placeholder because Kwan had suggested changing that to, let's wait to hear from the attorney. We are voting on Commissioner Strickland's motion, which is to have a placeholder for a closed session regarding personnel matters, awaiting input from the attorney, so.
In other words, if the attorney inform us that legally it can't be done, we don't do it, legally we can do it, we do it.
Correct.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, in favor, we have Commissioners Woodliffe, Bullock, Current, and Strickland, okay.
Am I to believe that this is a four-three vote?
Because I'm, I, I tell you, Mister Strickland, Mister Strickland, I don't, I honestly don't know what I'm voting for.
Well, I, I, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, Pat. I, it was just explained to you, Commissioner Fields?
No, 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 when we go in this meeting, I don't know what we're meeting for.
Well, I explain that to you?
We're going in a meeting to be bash.
Let, let's move on.
No, so it's passed, all opposed, just because we raised right hands, raise right hands if you are opposed to the motion. So, it passes to add placeholder four to three. Alrighty.
I don't think that, now that we, the motion is passed, I don't even think we should have voted on that, it should have just gone on like what the attorney said.
You made a motion.
Right, he did, so, you know, that's, that was my reason, no need to move to all that.
Okay. Uh, public hearings, everything else, Representative from Oxford Henderson Airport, that sounds great. Commissioner Woodliffe, do you know who will be there?
Uh, the new, the new, uh, managers?
Oh, great. Can you make sure we have their names added to this, let, let city know, that would be great. Okay, uh, public hearing to receive citizen input on amending the zoning ordinance to include the definition of craft, craft distillery and amending the table of permitted uses to allow a craft distillery in the B one zoning district. And then, uh, consider the amendment after the public hearing, any questions, we have Planning Director Hart with us.
Oh, can you explain that in layman's terms to us, to me, please?
Yes, sir, currently, we do not have a definition for, uh, craft distillery, so that's being proposed. And currently, distilleries are located only in industrial districts, I think they just be brief and, the proposed amendment would allow it in the, in the.
Do we have a potential interest in the property, oh, great.
And it's craft distillery only, to be specific, versus major.
Right, production.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty-five thousand gallons a year, I think was the limit, wasn't it?
Or two fifty, it might be two fifty. Twenty-five thousand?
I think if we do away with that much, we'll be alright.
Might be happening.
That's right.
What kind of whiskey is it that you make?
I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be good whiskey. But I do know they hope to use local green. Item six, public hearing to receive citizen input on a rezoning request from Eddie Cottle to rezone eight acres of land from residential agricultural to, uh, B two. So, and to consider that request after the public hearing, any questions for Planning Director Hart on this item?
It's right in front of Walmart.
Right, and I do have a sign up, and this is not part of the special we had in the tree, not the, on retail and.
It's on the other side of the road.
The watch is on, it's down, on, on the same side.
On the same side of the street is what you already discussed, or on the Walmart side?
No.
No, it's on the same side.
Okay.
Back toward the, uh.
Red.
It's right beside, the first is right beside the soap mall.
The soap, yeah, the soap mall.
Okay. Okay, okay, good, I didn't realize that. Um, thank you, new business, looks like we're missed, missed, oh, the hole punch punched out the number. Item seven, consider rewarding that twenty nineteen concessionaire contract for Oxford Park Athletic Complex to Fermor John's Ice Cream, Robert Gulliver. And any questions on this item, he's apparently done this in the past. Okay, item eight, consider accepting a certificate of sufficiency for the petition of voluntary contiguous annexation for plus or minus three acres of land adjacent to the Hardee's property located on Industry Drive, and adopting a resolution calling for a public hearing on that item in the April regular meeting, any questions on this? Okay. Item nine, consider appointing George Summers to the Planning Board. Consider number ten, consider adopting a resolution for twenty seventeen local water supply plan. And I think we have that information in our documents, and, uh, item eleven, consider approving a budget amendment for the wastewater treatment plant headworks repla- repairs. So this is related to the unanticipated failure of the grit collector and bar screen headwork system that occurred during, uh, tropical. headwork system that occurred during Tropical Storm Michael. Uh, Amy is not here, but are there any questions for the manager on this item? All righty then. Then we have the consent agenda with accepting the finance report and, uh, the February minutes. Questions with that? Commissioner Woodliffe, anything else?
None.
Commissioner Bullock?
Nothing.
Commissioner Fields?
No, man.
Commissioner Bridges?
Uh, nothing. I, I, I would like to say, um, um, that I had to travel, uh, out of state for, because my sister was very ill, and I got a call from my brother-in-law. And, um, I just wanted to report that, um, she has saved life and was doing better. But we, uh, still, um, certainly do need a prayer, um, for her, um, continued treatment and recovery.
Okay, thank you. We're sorry that you missed the second day. I'm glad you sent me the information, and we certainly, uh, hope that your sister continues to improve. Mayor Protem? Mr. Curran?
I do have a question. At the, uh, retreat, we were talking about paving being put off. Are places that'll be in, like Broad Street and where the Cam, uh, McClanahan across College, will that not be repaid until next year?
Amy and I have not had a chance to talk about it further. She was out today. We will talk about potentially, uh, doing a smaller project. We're gonna wait another additional year. We'll be bringing in additional power bill funds. And I'm like you, I would like to begin some, uh, projects and priorities of paving. In the meantime, while we wait for a larger project, you and I will be having that conversation about what's connected to the DOT project, and what can we potentially do on our own.
I, I just don't see that we can put off. And I don't know why DOT puts it off a year. When they cut a street, a strip across College Street, and we can't leave that unpaved, it's, it would be a year and a half.
I agree.
I mean, she said twenty-twenty, no, twenty-twenty-one. So that would be July, a year from this coming July, and it's not gonna be done July one. It could be another six months. I don't know if we need to, someone talk to someone with DOT, someone with the state, Mr. Garrison, Mr. Yawborough, but I think it's putting us on a heck of a bind. I mean, if that's the case, we shouldn't have started tearing up our roads at this point in time. And we're gonna spend our money, our Powellville money, to patch it, and then we'll tear it all up and repay it. When DOT comes through and does...
We'll be having that conversation about...
Mr. Allen, if, if, when you do, following up to that, with that being a U.S. highway, if we tear it up and refuse to, uh, fix it, wouldn't the state have to, have to patch it to make it passable?
They would, they would. And then we would have to deal with the ramifications of that, whatever they make.
We'll deal with it when they get ready to pay. We'll be glad to pay our part to pay back up. But, uh, Mr. Curran is, is exactly right. People in this town can, cannot go two years of the main travel road in, in this town.
I mean, Broad Street's off.
It's given me a fit going down Broad Street, and that's just a little sample of what it's gonna be.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Good points. Commissioner Strickland?
Yeah, this might be a, uh, of interest to Commissioner Bridges about parking around the courthouse. Understand that the, uh, grand jury couldn't find any parking spaces, so the, uh, Superior Court judge called the sheriff up to talk to him about it. And basically, uh, I can't tell you what was said between the two of them, but the rumor is, "Write them and bring them to me, and I'll dismiss it." Now...
I heard the same thing.
Oh, the judge, the judge said?
I, I'm not, I, that was, that was like, he said, she said, hearsay. But that's what I heard from two different sources. So might have some traction on your courthouse parking.
Okay. Mr. Manager?
Now, just add, um, Cindy's husband to your prayer list.
Yes.
She's out with him today. She's having some health concerns.
Certainly will. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Attorney, anything to add?
Never have, twenty-first.
Okay. Uh, and the only thing I want to add is, I want to thank everybody that was able to make it Friday and Saturday. I want to thank Allen, and we'll do that again, but Allen and the department heads and staff that worked so hard on their presentations. I think, uh, folks did a really outstanding job. I think the planning that went into it was great and, and strong, and I appreciated the input from each of you, so, thank you. It was a good retreat.
Thank you.
And with that?
Much.
Motion by Commissioner Curran, all in favor? Thank you so much.